...
Oh, wow.
This for his 25 years of service.
Aww.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Don't take it down.
I'll have your shirts.
We'll take it down.
I forgot all about it. It was hanging in my laundry.
Hey, Mr. Powell, I know this is the last meeting, but we need you up here. Thanks for pointing him in the right direction, Anthony. Can you read us a couple of books tonight?
What's that?
Can you read us a couple of books tonight? All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Casa Grande City Council on this December 5th. It's 6 o'clock, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have two items. The first, item A, which is invocation and pledge of allegiance. So I would ask that you please remain standing after the invocation. And I know somebody sent me the name, and I've forgotten.
I don't remember who it was.
Hang on. Sorry about that.
I know.
I know someone's here to do the invocation. Maybe you could... Wait, maybe they're not going to be here until 7:00.
Oh, maybe not here, Paul.
In that case, Matt would be there.
Pat Seiler.
Pat Seiler.
Pat Seiler here? Nope. Probably 7:00.
They'll probably be here at 7:00. So, all right, so we'll have Pat Seiler. And tonight? We'll have Matt Herman. Please arrange standing for the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be together on this beautiful day. We ask that you watch over this city and all the residents of it and guide us tonight as a council, new and old, to make the best decisions we can in the best interest of the citizens of Casa Grande. We also ask that you watch over every person in the city and especially our first responders in police and fire, our military people throughout the world, and also anyone that's having a time of trouble right now. We just ask you in this beautiful season that you watch over us, bring as much joy you can to everyone, and then these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join me for the last time in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, again, welcome, everyone, and let the roll call show that all members are present.
So noted.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. C1, C2, Powell? I know you're out of here, but really...
I'm really out of here.
Okay, right there. C1, C2. Need your glasses?
Yeah, I got them.
Okay.
Okay, looking at our minutes. I want to move for approval of the regular minutes from the November 21st, 2022 meeting and also consider the approval of the special minutes of November 28th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Item D is claims against the city. D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 16th.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What's brought to my attention that there is a typographical that should be November. They're correct in the packet. It's just in the agenda. So the minute should be November.
November 16th?
The claims.
Yes. I was just reading it.
Okay.
So, Mayor McFarland, I move we pay the proper claims of November 16th through 29th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Meeting agenda. Any changes to the agenda? I'm going to make one note that I am going to allow for public comment when we get to Mr. Powell's section, so I'm going to leave the public comment where it's at. And if people are here to speak on Mr. Powell's behalf, then I'll allow that during that portion of our meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Staff does have a recommendation to remove on the consent agenda, excuse me, item G4 from the agenda tonight. It'll be scheduled at a future meeting.
Okay. Any other changes? Anybody? All right, seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve with so noted changes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve tonight's meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved, as amended. We're going to save special presentations. Next item is item G, which is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. So anybody have anything you want removed? Anybody from the public? All right, seeing no one. I just wanted to make one note. Oh, wait, that's later. Never mind. It's on the second meeting. Yeah, it's on the second meeting. Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda with the amendment of the deletion of G4.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item H, which is public comments. So as I mentioned earlier, I am going to allow for public comment during Mr. Powell's recognition. So if there's anyone else who's here to address the council on any other subject, now is your opportunity. So I will open the floor with a reminder that this is... That you give us your name and keep your comments to three minutes and understand that we cannot comment about your comments, but we can have staff follow up at a later point. So because it's not agendized, we can't make comment on it. So if there's anybody here who would like to approach the podium, please come forward. Give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Tom Lilly, and I live on 2054 North Thornton Road, space 109. And I was just wondering about the pickleball courts out of Dave White. They have them chained up from 8:00 to 11:30, six of the 12 courts, and I'm trying to figure out why we can't play on them. And I was wondering if we paid for the use of the courts? I just can't quite understand why you would have chains on the courts and not be able to... I have 30 to 50 people that want to play there, but they can't play there because they're chained up. And I am a part of the pickleball, Dave White Pickleball Group. I pay my $25 half. I used to run it out there about four years ago, and I always made room for people besides the group to play on those courts. And it doesn't seem practical for taxpayers to not be able to play on the courts. And why would we build 12 courts if you can only use six of them? You know, it doesn't make sense. I don't understand why it's been that way. And if there is a problem, I would be glad to run the six courts and be responsible for it if that would take care of the problem. I'm not quite sure why, you know, I have guys there, and they say, no, you can't go out there. They're nonusable. And I'm thinking... I'm also the one that started the league out there, and we have the firemen play on the extra courts during the league play. They like to come out and play, so we open the court up, anything that's available. And anybody else that's out there that isn't in the league during the league play, we let them play on those courts. It's not a problem. And I can't understand why we would eliminate six courts out of 12 when we've spent a lot of taxpayer money to build those courts. And they are not... I'm not putting that down because it's the greatest thing around here. I think it's helped the community. We have 500 players play in the league every year, and I have people from all over the city come there to play with us, you know, on different times. But those morning times are the best times to have the courts available. And sometimes the Dave White Group are only using four courts, and so there's like eight courts that are not being used. And it just, you know, it's beyond my understanding why we're not allowing that. So I'd like your comment on that.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, we can't make comment on a non-agendized item. But I will make comment at the end on...
Thank you.
Possible follow up. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Kurt Bauer, 228 East Pebble Court, Casa Grande. I'm on... Talking about the same subject Mr. Lilly did. We have a 12-court pickleball system, and we're using sometimes as low as two to three courts. Nine courts are unavailable to the public. We... I'm on the City Park and Rec Advisory Board, the Community Advisory Board now, and they performed a survey, and they asked everybody, what's the most popular time to play? And it was overwhelmingly in the morning hours, between 8:00 and noon. And then the other part, one of the other questions were, why don't you play there? Overwhelmingly, people chose other venues versus the Dave White program, and they asked for comments on why. And there was several comments that were kind of vulgar, you know, and vulgar language from the administrators of the group. And we've reported it to Mr. Hardisty before, and now Mr. Gallegos, and nothing's being done about it. We asked, well, why is the code of conduct excluded from these two people? And they just said, well, we're moving on. And I go, now, if a basketball coach did the same behavior as these two gentlemen did, what would you do? Kick them out? Why isn't the same in effect for these two gentlemen? The program's great. I ran the program with Mr. Lilly before we even had more than three courts. We had chalked-in courts. Nine courts we had to chalk in. We worked with the city to get more courts. Great facilities. People love our facilities, great lighting. Bathroom's a little iffy, too small, but we have a great court. We've had tournaments there. I'm actually running a tournament Thursday, Friday, Saturday with the AARP people or literacy. It's a great, great venue, but if you're allowing only 12 to 14 people to play on those courts when they could handle 54 people, and to lock those up, that's embarrassing for me to go there and look at those for no reason except for childishness. That's why the group who runs the morning program, when both Mr. Lilly and I ran programs there, we always encouraged the public to play. If they didn't want to play with us, we always made sure there was courts open for them. We would restrict our people from going, taking over all the courts and limiting them to just what we needed. And in closing, I'm... Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I think I saw one more person. Go ahead. Come on up.
Hello. I just came to introduce myself. I know some of you. The mayor I've met and Matt. So my name is Rabbi Sisankin, and my address is a few blocks away. My wife and I moved here just under two years ago, and we moved here to open up a Chabar Center, which is... Chabar is the largest Jewish outreach community. We have over 6,000 centers in over 100 countries, including dangerous countries for Jews to live in. And we came here for the goal to bring life and the traditions of our beautiful religion to our people that live here. So besides for the Hasidic community that is here, there's also many Jewish people that have been living here for years. And as the city grows, many retired Jewish people are also coming to live here, and they're looking to see if there is a place for them to be, and we're here for them. We also, of course, have a message for the community at large, and especially when it comes to the seven universal laws that were given by God to Moses at Sinai, which include recognizing one God, number two, not to curse God, number three, the value of life from the womb, not to commit murder, number four, theft, not to commit that, number five, keeping the family sacred, not committing adultery, number six, not to be cruel to an animal, to live, to eat from an animal while part of it is still alive, and seven, to establish courts of justice. Well, in the light of that all, I wanted to invite all of you to the upcoming Hanukkah event, which is going to be in just under two weeks, on December the 18th at 5:00 p.m., right outside this special building. And the Hanukkah is called also the Festival of Lights. The message of bringing light to the world is something that we all can use. You know, we just had the special light parade, and this is another event of light, which the best way to combat evil is by shining a little light. You don't need to do anything else. If you go into a darkroom and you just bring a little light, all of the darkness goes away. And so I'd like to invite all of you to join us on a Sunday and hope to see you there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, I must say, we are honored to have the mayor coming also, and thank you, Matt.
Anyone else here this morning? This morning? Where am I?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Cruz, County Administrator for Pinal County District 3, representing Supervisor Steve Miller. Actually, just wanted to come here this evening, not just to give my regards to Mr. Powell, but to say thank you for all the city's support. Mayor McFarland, City Manager, Rains, for the Arizona Sunshine Healthcare Event that took place Thursday and Friday this past week. It was such a spectacular day, two days, actually, that really allowed us, along with our public county health team and other members, to provide free healthcare and clinical services to the most atneed individuals in the community. We served over 300 residents within the city of Casa Grande, everything from optometry care, primary care, dental care, really a wide array of different resources for families, haircuts. And it was such a phenomenal event. I want to thank you all for supporting that and allowing us the opportunity to come and assist. I had the privilege of being there two days, and it was those two days that reminded me of the work you do and we do to ensure that the needs of our community are met in all regards. So I want to say thank you on behalf of Supervisor Miller for your support. And I'll leave you at this because it was such a heartwarming comment that really gives perspective on how important this event was for the community. There was people that actually camped overnight to be first in line for services. And there was a young lady who told me on the way out, I'm very thankful because I could smile this Christmas with my family. She had a fractured tooth and just didn't have funding access, doesn't cover dental, and was able to get that free service here. So impactful work. I want to thank you for your support, allowing us to use the facilities, and we appreciate the partnership that you provide, and thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else like to address the council? All right, seeing no one else, and I will close the floor, but I did want to make a comment to all those who did speak, that we will follow up and get back to you, especially on the pickleball courts. I'm sure that, in fact, Larry, if you guys are still around at the break or something, maybe get specifically, if you don't have their names, if Gloria didn't get them written down, we'll make sure we follow up. Okay. Thank you. We do have a couple of items on the agenda tonight. We have item K1, which is consider the final approval of ordinance number 1178.429.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this appears for a second reading and not under the consent agenda because it did not receive a unanimous vote at the first reading. So it's ordinance number 1178.429, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to planned area development on property located generally east of Burrows Road and north of Gila Ben Highway, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance 1178.429 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item K12. This is consider the final approval of ordinance number 1178.236.4.
And again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is not on the consent agenda because it did not receive a unanimous vote during the first reading. And it is ordinance number 1178.236.4, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to the Casa Grande Regional Shopping Center Planned Area Development for property generally located north of Florence Boulevard and east of Mission Parkway, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.236.4 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell, for the last time, but certainly not forgotten.
And that was a yes.
Yes. And Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right. The next item on our agenda, actually, which is the last item on our agenda. We're going to do reports, sorry. It's on the agenda. We can say them further and say them next. You guys are okay with that? Okay. All right. So this next piece is bittersweet, and then we get to say not goodbye, but see you later to one of the longest, actually, sitting council members in the history of...
They actually wanted me to walk the plank.
City members in the city of Casa Grande, Mr. Dick Powell. So what I'd like to do first, if we can, I think the chief is here. Mr. Powell, do you want to kind of go down front? We're going to put you front and center.
Do what? Go down there? The podium? Yes, please.
So we can roast you. No roasting, just praising. And I think the chief has something he wanted to give you first, and then I've got a couple things.
I just wanted to tell you, on behalf of the Police Department, we present you with this flag, attention to public service buildings, and it says appreciation of your service to our community and support of the Casa Grande Police Department from June 2nd, 1997 to December 5th, 2022.
Oh, thank you so much.
You've been a good supporter. You've been great to work with, and we are going to miss you.
And we'd love to see you at the rodeo.
I love the rodeo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, start. Hi. How are you doing? Congratulations. We also wanted to give you a token of our appreciation and thanks. You've been very supportive of us. I've talked to you about that before. I know you have black hats. So we got you a life.
All right, so I've asked all the council members to come up front here, so why don't you guys all come up front here? Mr. Powell? Front and center, please. That's a heavy hat. That's a... I like your black hat. That's a nice hat, too, though. I would. Yeah, stand right here so you can see you. So really, this is Mr. Powell's last meeting as a council member. We just wanted to really tell him thank you very much. We had a little party last week that I think several of us had an opportunity to speak at and show appreciation, and your family was there, and I think they're here, too. So just this is... This particular plaque, in fact, why don't you do that one, Donna? You want to do that one first? Well, all right, you can hand it to him. So this is appreciation plaque, presented to Mr. Dick Powell for his dedication and service as Casa Grande City Mayor Pro Tem from December 6th, 2021 to December 5th, 2022. And then this, Powell, this is the big one because this one is in appreciation for his dedicated service as Casa Grande City Council Member, June 2nd, 1997 to December 5th of 2022.
I just wanted to say, and the mayor knows it, I have sat on both sides of him, and he needs help on either side, so...
And I have two bruised shoulders to show it. And then, Mr. Powell, so we have the... Your picture that has been hung here in the City Hall, so we wanted to give that to you, and you can find a prominent, nice place to stick it in your home.
Sure. Let me take it down.
So, and I wanted to offer to the council members to... Oh, oh, yeah, and your briefcase.
I was in the briefcase. I cleaned it up a little.
It's a rolling saddlebag.
I had to know that they were cleaning it up, so...
Mr. Powell, thank you. I have enjoyed working with you and have respected your knowledge and your dedication. You've been an inspiration.
Well, I'll say it right now? Okay. Right now? No, like I said at the meeting the other day, you know, Dick is my buddy, I just appreciate everything, all the support, you were there and picked me for the disposition years ago.
Future leader.
And you've just been so supportive, and I just really appreciate everything, and yeah, I'm just really, you're not going to be gone. I'm going to go to the car, I'm going to the 25 deals at the park.
He's already broke out about 12, though.
We have a lot of talent, so. Well, I don't think I even might, you know, Dick, we told you the other night, you've been a mentor to us, you taught us, you challenged us a number.
You've challenged us a number of times, and that's okay, but nobody's going to wear the cowboy hat like you.
Steve.
Wait a minute.
No, Steve's not wearing that cowboy hat like you.
He should take it over.
Yes.
He's the cowboy.
And Mr. Powell, I wanted to say, you called me too when I was first going for this job, and I appreciate that. Also, you know, like I mentioned, you've got big boots to fill, you know, with you, but you've definitely made an impression on the city with our water policy, everything else. And I was thinking, you're going to be the longest-serving council member with the new charter amendment, because no one else can serve, so you will be the forever-longest-serving council member.
That's right.
And so that's pretty neat, and we can't think of a better person.
Can I add 13 years ahead of that, like my father used?
Yep, your father's, and all your service on the school board before that too, service to our community.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it's hard, but there's one, there's one good thing about your retiring is now, I'll be my mom's favorite council member.
Well, Dick, one of the things that I've come to appreciate about you is the stories that you would tell us. And so this story I'm going to tell you reminds me of you. There's a grandfather walking on the beach with his grandson, the tide is out, and there's all these starfish that have washed up on the beach. And the grandson is throwing the starfish into the ocean, and the grandfather says, what are you doing? He says, I'm throwing the starfish in the ocean or they'll die. And the grandfather says, you can't possibly make a difference, look at them all. The grandson throws one in the ocean, he says, I made a difference for that one. You have been the lone vote many times in six to one votes, but you have made a difference for this community from day one in all those 25 years, and gave us all a great example to live by about standing up for what we believe is right, so best of luck, sir. I think what I'd like to do is get all the council in a picture with Mr. Powell, we're going to maybe back there. If you guys, and then you have the.
We all have our whole possible words. Cover up. Merry Christmas.
Are you from center? Or all of us?
Did you announce what you were going to say? Okay. Let's see, just go ahead. Okay. Speak, so you can. We can announce it. What are you going to say? Okay. Let's see, just go ahead. Okay. Speak, so you can. We can announce it.
So I said I would allow the public to speak during this opportunity or this time of the meeting, and so if you would like to and you want to come up and speak into the mic so that people online can hear, that's the purpose for this, this isn't for the audience, it's for those who are watching on TV. And so if, but please keep your comments short, because I do have a meeting to start at seven o'clock. So you have like 25 minutes.
I've jotted down. Dick, I've jotted these down, I want to make sure I stay on track and on time, and I will do that. Dick Powell, a man well-light, but a man who never tried to be well-light, always, always voted his conscience, even those who disagreed with that principle. Dick and I first crossed paths, he won't remember this, maybe 57 years ago, we both showed up on the doorstep, we were neither married, showed up on the doorstep of a girl we both hoped to see that night. And that ensues another story that I will not tell at this time. But the real coming to know, Dick, was when we served on the CGHS Board of Governors together. From that mutual respect, we've been close friends for 40 years, even taking our wives out to dinner, going to movies on occasion, and those kinds of things. Few people know that the reason that Casa Grande High School is located on North Treckle, where it is today, it was in the desert, no road in, no road out, and Dick dug in his well-worn boots and said, this is the best place. From this, he measured from where we are sitting tonight out to that side, and I don't remember the exact, 4.2 miles or something, at any rate, he stayed with it against the popular thinking of that day, and because of Dick Powell's foresight, it is where it is. Dick's faith has been his north star. So many conversations between us, but what matters most in this life. So Dick, thank you. Thank you for service to things and to people, for your ever-present love and promotion of a once-small community to a city known as Casa Grande. But finally, and most importantly, your caring heart and your charity for others who call this also their home. We'll see you around. I need to let you know about Scott. When we were on the high school board, we thought we should probably pay to be there because we had so much fun, but we were, he would do his homework, but they had trail stations way out in Ahoe. And so I said, how do you do your studying? He said, well, I just set it up there on the, against the mirror and I drive, you know, there's not much traffic on this road. And thank God you got here, Scott. I'll call you like we know each other, Don Powell. We always, I was, you're Don Powell and I'm Don Rafael, and you are one great hombre, yes, from Paso del Norte, you're one great hombre, for sure. I want to thank you for your mentorship, because you're the first council member that when I got on board, you were my mentor. And I remember the first time I was running, you said to me, things will be all right, and they were. Truly appreciate the friendship. And you always said, you always said a few things that always stuck to me. The first one is, you said, be hard on issues and soft on people, and you have always done that. And as Jeff has said, you are always, a lot of times, a lone wolf. And you are always hard on the issues but soft on people. And you always provided that rural feeling and balancing the growth, and I remember we've had so many conversations about how do you balance that rural feeling and that growth, and I think everyone has managed to do that. And also your advocacy for water rights, that has been so important. And I also remember one of the things he's always said about the railroad, if you get stuck on the railroad trying to get over and trying to measure how long that railroad was, is if it was a one casser or a two casser or a three casser. Every time I get stuck on Frontier and Treckle, I always remember, because I'm measuring how many casas there are. But ultimately, you're very caring, you're honorable, you fight for what you believe in, you fight for constituents, and I want to just thank you so much for 25 years of service. Thank you. Thank you. As a native of Casa Grande, been here for many years, I want to take my hat off to you, because you've done a magnificent job of taking care of the city and promoting everything for us. All I can say is thank you very much, Dick, I appreciate it.
Good evening.
You know, I was talking with Larry beforehand, though, and you are going to have to come
back for one more special meeting.
Oh, yeah?
Granny Granny.
No.
That's an issue we have not spoken about here in a long time, but that was the first issue that you and I butted heads about, was what are we going to do with Francisco Grande? And since then, we have had our share of disagreements in public, but never in private.
Well, in.
You know, and it's never been personal with you, and you probably just agreed with maybe 5% of the things that I advocate for in a public setting, but the most important thing I want to remind people of is that even with all that, people have seen that, but when I was sick, and that's come up in five years, now, in February, you were there at the hospital helping my wife and supporting her, as well as other council members, but we're here to talk about Dick tonight. So I can't tell you how fun it's been to be on the other side from you sometimes, but overall, I've never, ever doubted that your heart was in where you felt was best for the city. And that's all that really matters in the end, and everybody does that, and it all works out in the end. In these days, for people to be able to sit at a diocese like this and disagree, but then five minutes later go have a drink with each other, have a dinner or something, that's vitally important in my book. So congratulations on 25 years.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
This is the mayor candidate right here.
Mr. Powell, you are a legacy to our city with everything that you've done and cared for. I also am a born and raised here in Casa Grande, yes. I think you chased us out of your yard a few times, all nine four kids. But you know you've left your footmark on the city. When I went to pick up your cake today, the lady came around the corner, handed me the cake and gave me a hug. She left a post-it note on the receipt for Mr. Powell. It says, Councilmember Dick Powell, thank you for all your years of service. So, I mean, I think that says it all. And then in your briefcase is a lot of cards of thank you, so go through it, we're afraid you stick it in your closet, so please go through your briefcase and read those cards from all the people who have loved you through all these years of being on the council. Yes, I love you.
Thank you for the reminder, Regis.
Councilman, first and foremost, just want to say thank you for your service. It's always been a pleasure working with you, both in a professional and personal capacity, whether it was working with the schools in my time there and supporting the children in this community. I always remember the day I went to your store, go down and get your support for, and a ballot initiative at the time, and you've always been with an open door policy, whatever you could do to help, and your campaign slogan, "Community First," speaks for it. So we thank you for that, my time working with the county, we appreciate all you've done, your innovative and progressive ideas when it comes to water, and the work you've done with Pickwa and the Pinnell County Water Augmentation Authority. You're truly a class act, and you know, the best part is, though, what I get is all the stories from your neighbor across the street, Supervisor Miller. So, you know, I get a little bit more of the details on all these stories, so I'll have to ask about the one girl that you both showed up to, Paul, and get her name. But in all seriousness, in all seriousness, thank you, Supervisor Miller couldn't be here this evening, but we appreciate you and your service to this community, and thank you for all your years of hard work.
I've always told everybody he's the worst neighbor you could have.
He is.
He works on everything, my wife sees that. Probably watching football or getting through.
Why don't you go do some work like your neighbor? Yeah, you know, but so, thank you very much for everything, appreciate you, and we just wanted to give you our best regards. Say again?
We had a good trip when we were going across that.
Oh, yeah. Always, always, always a good time, and appreciate what you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? Good, good. Yeah. I will, I will. So my mom couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted me to tell you congratulations and for all the wonderful advice and mentorship that you gave her for the city council, but as a teacher, and I just appreciate all your support for the youth of Casa Grande, whether it be 4H and football and everything that the students do. You're always on Facebook, you're always in support, giving positive messages, and you're definitely a role model to look up to, so thank you very much.
Mr. Powell, on behalf of the Casa Grande Youth Commission, I would like to thank you, Mr. Powell, for your service and dedication to our city. The commission hasn't forgotten your great support you showed us in the commission's earliest days in its founding, and you've showed us nothing but enthusiasm ever since. The youth commission's guiding motto is young, diverse leaders making a positive and reliable impact in our community. And there isn't a truer statesman who could have given us a better example of making a positive and reliable impact on our community than you, Mr. Powell, so thank you.
All right, seeing no one, then, Mr. Powell, do you have a few words you want to say?
Yeah. Yeah? Yeah, put that timer on, we could be here a while. Can you drop something over that three?
Your glasses are up here, Mr. Powell, do you need them?
Oh, okay. Well, our family moved to Casa Grande in 1951, and I've been here on the council for 25 years. My father was on for 13 years, that makes 38 years on council. I think there's things that, I first of all, want to say thank you to this community. There's no place like Casa Grande, and I love it, and we keep getting better and better. And we have good leadership, we have good staff, the people that work here are really good. So we're one of the best communities in the state of Arizona. One of the things I think you really ought to think about, Mike, is to need to conduct a feasibility study on piping Mississippi water to Arizona. And I'm serious about this. We don't have any water, and if you go to both reservoirs, they're empty. And the only way you can get water back in those is to flow it back in from the Green River, and that would be a way that we would have it year-round. And the farmers would be good again, the developers would be good again, and we really need to see if we can find somebody to do a feasibility study to tell us what it would cost, you know, whatever. But Brenda Bowlen, she's a good friend of mine, she's head of the CAP right now, and she's familiar with our plan, but getting it done, we've had disappointments a couple of times. I was on, the first time we did it, the Senate and the House were meeting, and I was on TV, believe it or not, and they were. on TV, believe it or not, and they were talking about voting for that, that, that program, and, and they all voted for it. And later, a couple, three days later, I came down with COVID, so it wasn't totally good, but it, I, I just, I think that, that. Okay, well, anyway, I think that's a serious situation, and we really need to explore it, and we really need to work with people to see. Sometime back, the University of Arizona would do facility projects, and so.
Let's go under Mr. Powell's reports.
Yeah.
Since it's not agendized, we'll put it under your reports.
Well, on a report, you're a good mayor. Okay, well, anyway, I was asked on years ago to the city council by Ralph West, and it wasn't hard to any people going, and I had several of the people ask me to get on the council, and I thought, you know, that sounds like a good idea, and, but the, that, that lasted for many, many years, and Ralph West went his way, and the people that were there, most of them were on the first, the first council, and we've had good councils, I've been on almost every one of them, and we have never had a bad one. The people that come here sacrifice their time, spend a long time studying things, getting into things, not always being the votes, that you might want to see hands in the air, I try to get the mayor's hand up, but I can't do it, and, and, but anyway, as I say, I think it's, I think we have another kid named Garrett Powell that would probably be next year interested if there's an open seat somewhere, and he's had law schools have him come in, and he's got a really good job right now, so. My mother had "I love Casa Grande" buttons, and, and she was really something. You guys want to get the books? Want to get the books? Yeah. And, as I say, this is, this is a wonderful community, I don't know a better place, and we can see the mountains, we don't see a bunch of overly tall buildings, and, but there, there's some that are now, you know, things are getting bigger, but it's a beautiful area, and if we look around us, we have a, we're in a corral of the mountains on every direction, so it's a beautiful place to be, and the staff and the employees are super, they're excellent, and, and this is number one right here, but I think you'd say everybody else that works here is the same, huh? Yeah, no, we've, we've just been blessed with the kind of people we've had, and the one thing I wanted to do before I sat back down is my mother was the Dorothy Powell Senior Center, and I wanted to, to give about 40 pounds' worth of books when this, when this is over, they're coming in from outside with it, to, to the library, for the, for the one, not the library, but for the senior center, for those, those seniors to have books to look at, and they don't have to buy anything. They're just, there'll be those books there, and they're all bestsellers, pretty much. So, as I say, that makes me happy, it makes her happy, and, and you guys have made me so happy, so God bless all of you.
Well, the last item here is to adjourn, and we're going to adjourn signing die, and we'll take as much time as we need, we'll try and, we're going to do some cake, right, Larry? We've got some cake and stuff for folks here, so we'll, let's plan on starting our second meeting at 7:15, is that enough time? Okay. Alright, so we adjourn, signing die.
Alright.
Thank you, man.